I'd like to call the order, the June tenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the U.K.A. and Board of Education. First up is to approve our minutes from our May twentieth meeting. Review the minutes, have a motion. Trina, second. Diana, all those in favor? Abstentions? Great, thank you. Next is to review and approve the agenda. Have a motion? Penny, second. Sherry, all those in favor? Great, thanks. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of fifteen minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Great, thanks. Next is reports in recognition. First is the Cabe Student Awards. Dr. Lutzy.
I will go to the board.
Great.
All right. No, not yet. Picture of my family. Although it does bolster me a little, that's okay. Good evening. We'll begin tonight with a presentation of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Leadership Awards, and both of our student recipients and their parents are with us this evening. A little bit about the award to begin. The mission of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education is to assist local and regional boards of ed in providing high-quality education for all Connecticut children through effective leadership. Cabe is passionate about strengthening public education through high-performing, transformative local school board and superintendent leadership teams that inspire success for each student. The Cabe Student Leadership Awards Program is designed to honor Connecticut high school seniors who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. One male and one female student from each high school in a Cabe member district are eligible to receive this prestigious award. The leadership skills this award looks to recognize and honor are students' willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, a concern for others, an ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, an ability to understand issues clearly, and the dedication to honor a commitment. A committee of teachers, counselors, and administrators met together to consider the best candidates for this year's Cabe Award, and it became clear that our two award winners tonight best exemplify all that Cabe is looking to honor through the award, and that they are truly superb representatives of the NCHS class of two thousand and nineteen. So to begin. What is it like to be the youngest of six kids? Well, Gray Farley knows the answer to that question, and one thing I can tell you is that he's enjoyed the quiet of having his own bedroom for the first time this year, now that his triplet siblings are off to college. Although, prior to our meeting, I was talking to him, Ben, he said, "They're all home now." Things aren't quite as quiet as they were, but he's certainly glad that they're back. Gray and his family grew up in New Canaan, and he attended South as an elementary student. I'm sure Ms. Rocco, who's here, and who knows everyone, had fun reconnecting with Gray and his family a bit, and I'm sure his inquisitive, curious mind was fully engaged even back then as an elementary school student. In high school, Gray participated in our science research class, where he traveled almost two hours each way to research in a science lab. When he first arrived at the lab, Gray and the other students who were participating were randomly assigned to different supervisors, and he feels extremely lucky to have been assigned to a professor working on DNA sequencing. The research he conducted throughout the experience looked at scar tissue and growth in the body. As Gray explained to me, scar tissue is crosshatched, not smooth like unscarred tissue, and in his research, he was looking at the DNA behind it all and how it all works. How am I doing? All right, not bad for an English teacher, okay. But Gray describes the experience as one of the very best he's had at NCHS, as it helped guide him to be interested in physical engineering in his future. But throughout our conversation, it was quickly clear that Gray had many outstanding experiences during his time at NCHS. I like to ask students what their favorite class was. When I asked Gray, the list just flowed out. Some that came to the top were Biology with Mrs. Sebolski, AP Government with Mr. Joshi, AP Statistics with Mr. Hansel. As we discussed what made each of these classes special, Gray invariably went to the dedication and knowledge of the teachers, and to the connections they made with him and with the other students in the classes. Regardless of the discipline or the level, Gray is curious, interested, and engaged as a learner, and having spent some time together, I say with confidence that his teachers must have absolutely loved having him in their classes. This summer, Gray will spend some time caddying to make a few extra dollars. He's on our golf team, and he looks forward to continually, continuing to recreationally play golf in the future. So do I, sometimes. This summer, he's considering driving out to college with his father. It'll be quite a ride, since he's going all the way out to Stanford, where he'll study physical engineering. Gray loves the idea of going to school in the Silicon Valley area, and is looking forward to, among other things, the great weather that's out there. When I asked him what he thought set his application apart from the tens of thousands who applied, he honestly and quite humbly said, "I really have no idea." Well, after getting to know Gray a little bit, I think I know. He's a truly amazing student and an even more impressive person, and after speaking with him, I think Stanford is incredibly lucky to have him. Gray, on behalf of the Board of Ed, congratulations on winning the two thousand and nineteen Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Leadership Award. Come back and see us, share with us the great things that you're doing. We know that you'll do important work and help make the world a better place. Thanks. Okay. I was instantly struck by her engaging manner and her positive spirit. We talked about school, work, summers, and the future, and regardless of the topic, she spoke with energy, optimism, and joy. She's dynamic, engaging, active, and in all ways, quite impressive. If you read the Koran, her name is likely quite familiar to you. As a prolific reporter, her articles have been appearing in the paper for years. This year, she accepted the responsibility as one of the three editors-in-chief of the paper. Under her leadership, the paper continued to produce informative, professional, and insightful articles that delved into topics of interest for students in the school, and has expanded its digital presence to include Twitter in the website more frequently. And I can tell you, her article on college interviews, do's and don'ts, was a really big hit in my house. Carolyn's interest in journalism and communications has led her to pursue an internship in corporate communications, and she's in the midst of the experience with, is it, Genesee? Genesee, Genesee and Wyoming Railroad. As the Darienite.com described it, it's a five-billion-dollar international railroad company, although what I just found out was that since Carolyn's joined the company, the valuation has gone up at least ten percent. Look it up. Her father was humble, didn't want to give her the credit, but there are only twenty other employees in the office. But truly, Carolyn was thrilled in our conversation to be becoming the twenty-first employee in the Darien office, and the experience has just been incredible for her. Carolyn's also very active in cross-country. She ran the eight hundred in track, and she's considering joining a running club when she goes to school next year. When you get to know her, that makes sense, because she's spent many summers in Utah with her family, where they bike, hike, and just generally enjoy the outdoor activities together. Carolyn's favorite class throughout high school was her physics class taught by Paul Reed. Although she didn't expect to like it initially, Mr. Reed is such a wonderful teacher that he made her want to learn more and more. She was amazed in our conversation about how much she remembers about the class, and has such respect for Mr. Reed that she even attended graduation last year to hear him give the keynote address to the graduates, and she certainly wasn't disappointed. Carolyn's faith is an important part of her life, and she serves as a eucharistic minister at her church. Her faith led her to ultimately enroll at Notre Dame in the fall, where she'll join the business school, majoring in law with a journalism minor. As we talked together, I learned that, as well as being a Catholic university, a primary draw to Notre Dame was that during her visit, everyone there seemed genuinely and passionately proud. Carolyn wants to attend a school where students care about and are proud of their university, and Notre Dame certainly meets that requirement. Throughout her four years at New Canaan High School, Carolyn has immersed herself into our program, our school, and our culture, and I'm wholeheartedly confident she'll do the same when she arrives at South Bend in late August. In the meantime, if anyone needs a babysitter, she's looking for work and comes very highly recommended. Carolyn, congratulations on receiving the Connecticut Association of Board of Ed Leadership Award for two thousand and nineteen. Your time at NCHS has been truly outstanding, and we look forward to the many wonderful accomplishments you'll have in the years ahead. Two wonderful Cabe Leadership Award winners this year. I would like to ask if the board would be willing to take a brief recess so we can take some pictures with our awardees. Great. Thank you, sir. Yeah, you're welcome.
I guess we did all right in terms of college admissions.
Even if you live in New Canaan, you don't get to. You might be to go to the graduate hall.
That's what we need. Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, so nice.
I've just got the picture. Thank you. Good picture? Good picture?
No, they had me, they had me in a hole.
Wow, that's so nice. Where was that? A wet, like, this is wet. On Chaussette. Oh, really? Under a washing thing, with a ring. Chaussette. On Saturday, in Massachusetts, Amesburg. It was a beautiful day.
Oh, yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
No, thank you. What'd you do?
We're doing our bath.
Oh, my God, so much work.
Are you doing it yourself?
Wow.
It's good, I know.
It takes long.
Every state, they have, 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 And she will willingly, happily go find it for you and learn alongside. She is by all definition a master of our craft. One might think that such a master craftsman, crafts person, could be off-putting to others. But where Joanne is concerned, the opposite is true. Our elementary teachers know her to be expert in her field. They also know her to be an eager mentor, an encouraging coach, and an incredibly supportive friend. Through the years, she's forged strong collaborative relationships with our teachers and our parents. And her deep understanding of how children learn to read has earned her the respect and the admiration of all of those around her. Joanne has a deep understanding of teaching and learning, is a strong advocate for parents reading aloud to their children as often as possible. I wanted to get that plug in for you. She knows that education is a team sport and is always willing and able to partner with others on behalf of children. She's forged strong collaborative relationships with teachers and parents through her love of reading and is passionate about inspiring all of us to do all that we can to ensure that every child grows up loving and respecting the power of reading in their lives. Joanne has coached many of our classroom teachers through the years. And I can say with confidence that our program is as strong as it is in part, thanks directly to her. She served as a member of the West School Student Study Team, is an expert in our foundations program, has been trained in Orton Gillingham, and always brings everything she can to bear on any issue facing a child. As an innovative leader, Joanne has provided transformative, professional learning experiences to our classroom teachers. Her work with grade-level teams district-wide has directly embedded instructional best practices in reading across our elementary schools. In recent years, Joanne has even branched out to use Twitter. As you might expect, her handle is JMS Reader. And she's helped to develop the West School Blog, which she created as an opportunity to share professional learning focused on metacognition in the areas of reading, writing, coaching, and learning. We've all benefited from Joanne's expertise, her sense of humor, and her love of children and learning. And now it's her turn to spend time with her grandchildren and loved ones in the years ahead. One thing we can all count on, Joanne's retirement will be spent in continuous pursuit of learning, rich in literacy, and filled with the joys of reading aloud, aloud to her grandchildren. Joanne, we wish you the very best in the years ahead. And we thank you for your dedicated service to the children of New Canaan in these past eleven years. Just pause there for a moment.
I'm going to miss the children and I'm going to miss the colleagues that I've made here. They are considerably younger than I am, so I'm going to have to get used to making friends my own age.
My favorite memory of Mrs. Schulman is when...
Let me try that again. Keep calm.
I'm going to miss the children and I'm going to miss the colleagues that I have made here, many of whom are considerably younger than I am, so I'm going to have to get used to making friends my own age.
My favorite memory of Mrs. Schulman is when a student she had been working tirelessly for, for two years, finally, with all her strategies and, you know, intervention, finally clicked and he became a reader. It's my favorite memory of her.
I love language, I love being able to change children's lives. Over the years, I've had fabulous opportunities to grow in that area and I'm passionate about it.
What I will miss most is our daily, about Mrs. Schulman is our, our daily conversations and just updates on her family, the latest and the greatest reading strategy or guru that happens to come along. I will miss that. And her wonderful sense of humor.
My favorite memory of working in Canaan Schools, of course, of the children that I worked with, getting to know the families and working in a smaller school, so I've actually gotten to know families over the years. In fact, I know the families of these people, gentlemen, that are actually interviewing me now. So, that's possibly one of my most favorite memories. I also loved working with my colleagues, the other district specialists or West School specialists, and making our summer movies that we used to do. We had lots of fun doing that.
One thing that I really miss about Mrs. Schulman is the, is not seeing her every day and feel, getting that energy from her, the passion she had for reading and for, and for the joy she brought to children and to teachers' lives.
Actually, when I was sitting where you're sitting right now, I didn't want to go into education. I wanted to go into journalism. And I went to a school that majored in journalism, but at that point, I actually had a high school guidance counselor way back then that discouraged me from going into the field because it was a very too competitive for women at that time. So, I stupidly listened to that advice and entered the field of education, but since, I actually have no regrets.
Joanne, I just wanted to take the time to thank you for all you have done for me as a new teacher coming into New Canaan. You took me under your wing and you made sure that I had everything I needed and if there was something I didn't understand, you took the time to help me understand it and, you know, you really, you just took good care of me and made sure that I was, I was in a good place. I also want to thank you for giving me, showing me the passion you need to have for reading and for making sure that you do the research to find the right strategy or the right process to use as a student because without that, our students wouldn't grow the way they did because of all of that information that you would spend hours researching. So, I thank you for that. And I will miss you, seeing you every day.
Initially, when I was in high school, I was trying to pursue some other things, but as I said earlier, I don't have any regrets.
Okay, so our next retiree is Deb Carney. And I remember the day when I learned that Deb Carney was retiring from West School. I was in a meeting with Darlene and Jill, and throughout the meeting, they just weren't themselves. They were, see, if you saw the look. Something clearly was wrong. So after the meeting, I went up to them and asked them what was happening. And together, they shared with me how sad they were that Deb Carney was retiring. Granted, they were quick to tell me how happy they were for Deb, who has served our kids incredibly well for 22 years. But nonetheless, they were sad because they told me straight away that Deb is one of the finest teachers they've ever known. And as I've learned since, they both were absolutely right. Deb joined our district in 1997 after completing her undergraduate studies at Mount Holyoke and her masters from Teachers College, Columbia University. So, no wonder she's so good. For her 22 years in New Canaan, Deb committed herself to the students at West Elementary who were in need of special education services. She worked primarily in grades three and four and served as the instructional leader for the special ed team as well. Her administrators and her colleagues alike look to Deb for guidance, advice, and support. And she's always gracious with her time, talent, and compassion whenever there's a need. Deb's commitment to her students has earned her a reputation as a tireless, effective advocate for children. Her skillful collaborations with the general education colleagues has led to the creation and delivery of powerful, appropriate, and effective instruction focused on meeting the specific needs of each of the children in her care. She's a skilled member of the West Student Study Team and has been instrumental through the years assisting with the development and implementation of our response to intervention across the school. To be a master teacher, one must also be a continual learner. And Deb's training as a diagnostician in Orton Gillingham has yielded outstanding results for our students through the years. Her assessments are astute, precise, and insightful. And she delivers superb individualized instruction to our kids. Deb is committed heart, mind, and spirit to every single child in her care. And this commitment has earned her the trust and respect of parents and the entire community. When a teacher truly loves children, especially some of our most vulnerable children, they often carry with them a gentle wisdom that's informed by the mind and the heart. Such a wisdom flows from Deb, is felt by those around her, and leaves one with a sense of calm joy as a result. Deb has transformed countless students into young readers and learners and has made the world a better place for every single one. So Deb, thank you for 22 years of outstanding service on behalf of the children, parents, and the staff of New Canaan. You've left an indelible mark on West School and we're forever grateful for your outstanding work on behalf of the children in our care. Know that you've made a difference in the lives of the children and the colleagues fortunate enough to call you teacher and friend. And we wish you all the very best in the years ahead.
I've had the privilege of working in New Canaan Public... Hi, I'm Deb Carney and I have had the privilege of working in New Canaan Public Schools, specifically at West School, as a special education teacher for 22 years. And it's been the best experience of my life. Lots of memories, lots of learning, and I'll cherish it forever. Well, that happened a long time ago, when I was pretty young. I always really liked working with children that were younger than I was. And starting as a stick team, I had an opportunity to be a tutor at a primary school outside of Boston. And that's where I first started experiencing joy. We're working with students that needed help, so sometimes they didn't know that they needed help, so sometimes they didn't want help, but I was able to actually make impact on their lives. So, that's kind of how it got started. And I never really feared that. I was interested in a lot of other things. I really liked math. And I was really interested in science and research. All those things I had to come together to be able to help students. So, that's kind of how it got started.
So, John Hattie says that teaching occurs when teachers see learning through the eyes of students and the help that they become their own teachers. Ms. Carney has always loved to teach her students as individuals. She respects them and engages them in learning by involving them always in the learning process. She truly makes them responsible over their own path. The many learners that have been impacted by her have become more independent and more capable based on her guidance. West School will truly miss her, her positive energy, her compassion, her empathy, and she is a phenomenal teacher and inspirational colleague.
Yeah, there are lots of special moments with students and that would be the main reason why I love, love, love my job. So, one special moment is when a student was trying to just read a word and it was a new skill and they had to break their words and use their phonics. And the student just said, you know what, you just gave me the key to reading. And that was just one of the things because we had a VISA, it's a little bit the same around the year, that they had keys and they could use them to unlock any doors they wanted. And it wasn't just about reading, it was about everything and it was about life. So, I liked that.
I think the kids will remember Ms. Carney as being flexible and really respecting who they are as individuals and learners and listening. She's an active listener and I think that's what makes her so successful as a teacher.
Let's see, what about retirement? Excites you the most? Probably travel. The one thing about teaching is that you have so much vacation time, which is awesome, but it's at set times. So, just have this little idea that I get to travel now in spring and fall. And I think that would be really fun. The other important thing is just how am I going to keep learning? What, you know, what am I going to be doing? So, the other thing I'm interested in is home projects. So, that'll be fun for me to, you know, to do a lot of things around my house that I like to build. And I kind of want to get into furniture building a little bit more. So, that's something I'm interested in. But I'm going to miss this place.
One word that I would use to describe Ms. Carney is always very positive.
So, I also just really want to say thank you to the Canaan community, to everyone in New Canaan and West Schools who helped me. Today makes it such a wonderful experience. And support to me in our number one priority, which is helping kids to do the best they can about themselves and to learn as much as they can and to learn to be learned. And I love it. Thanks.
So in my excitement, I didn't provide time for Joanne to say a couple of words to the board, or I'd like to ask. I was so excited.
Can I adjust this?
Absolutely.
So, my biggest fear was that I would someday have to present to the board and stand at the podium. And I was really, I, I watched Glenda when she retired and she was able to look at things and talk and it was a big concern of mine. But, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, to thank all the administrators, and to thank my wonderful colleagues who came here tonight. It was the best opportunity that I could have ever taken is when I came to New Canaan Public Schools. It was a great opportunity to learn and to grow as a professional and to leave at the top of my game. I mean, I did say in my letter to Gary, I really experienced, I had my dream job, so I want to thank you very much for that. And as my husband said, I'm supposed to tell you that I didn't really mean it that I didn't want to be a teacher.
Thank you, Mrs. Schulman.
Thanks so much, everybody. I think my biggest nightmare is having to follow Joanne. Joanne is very funny and that is something that I really appreciate and something that I've been able to experience here in New Canaan, a sense of humor. And I wanted to say thanks to everybody because, not just for the humor, but for the support and for giving me the opportunity to, to work in this awesome district and to be able to maybe make a difference in a few kids' lives. And thank you, everybody, for coming and, and supporting this in my retirement. I'm sorry to leave you in many ways and I'll miss you very much. So, thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, our third teacher retiree is unable to make it tonight. But she's equally amazing, so I want to take a moment to share a little bit about her with the board as well. You know, there are different types of superheroes in the world. Some of them fly around with their capes, leap tall buildings in a single bound, save the planet from total destruction every so often. But another type of superhero is the one who doesn't want any of the credit or the attention, who goes about her day, each and every day, doing her absolute best on behalf of others with no thought of fame, no thought of glory. These superheroes can often be found in our classrooms. And Trish Chase is a hero among superheroes in this regard. Trish joined us in 1988, spent her career serving our neediest children as a special education teacher at South Elementary School for 31 years. Throughout these years, she brought a sense of calm, composed, she brought a calm, composed, unassuming demeanor to her work with children and with families.
unassuming demeanor to her work with children and with families, and she was the epitome of a master teacher, truly representing all that is good about our profession. Trish's excellence as a special ed teacher shown through every single day. Teaching children is complex and challenging, yet Trish approached every challenge with 100% of her energy and her effort. She respects the power of our work with children and knows that it's our responsibility to do everything in our power to improve the lives of the children in her care. Her commitment has resulted in wonderful successes through the years, and every year her students, parents, and colleagues know that she will make a positive difference in the lives of the children in her classes. While spanning her career at South, Trish never stopped being a learner, a collaborator, a mentor, a colleague, and a friend. All those in Trish's orbit benefited from her kindness, her wisdom, and her love. Trish has a magical gift of making every student and parent feel they are her very top priority, which she demonstrates by showing them that she'll stop at nothing to help them succeed. She takes every opportunity to celebrate student success, no matter how small it may seem, because she knows that to that student, it means the world. She's a master of her craft, infinitely kind, and unwaveringly patient. Trish has been a calming influence that you can just feel in her presence, and her ability to get her students to work to their highest potential is a gift that her students will continue to benefit from for years to come. I believe that great things happen when nobody cares who gets the credit. Great things have been happening in Trish Chase's classroom for years and years, but she would never want any of the credit. In all she does, Trish is truly an exemplary professional. By example, she inspires us all. She's a true superhero in every sense, and we are eternally grateful for all that she's quietly and competently accomplished for and with our students through the years. So Trish, thank you, and we wish you all the very best in the years to come.
First, I gotta give a shout out to my Carol to the background. My favorite memory of Trish is our lunch console meetings. She always had the best lunches. I always wished that she would offer me some, but she would always equip me with information I needed about my students, so we could, you know, do the best part of your case. But I will definitely remember all the time she's given me for that. I mean, it's really a lunchtime, but she is so dedicated that she, you know, wants to make sure I had the information I need. So I'm going to miss that.
I don't think there's any one particular memory about Mrs. Chase. There's just too many special things about her that you could quantify in one particular memory. Overall, you always knew that you were a great candidate when you were with Mrs. Chase. She always made the kids feel comfortable. She always made the staff feel comfortable when you were working with her, because she's a consummate professional. So she's just always been a great teacher, someone so professional, so great at her job.
My favorite memory is last year she and I shared a room together, and we were just talking. She's great to talk with, laughing, and then a student came, the Kiki Nurt came in. We had talked about how much she did teaching. Kiki walked in, she just kind of immediately switched into teacher mode and pulled out a bucket of puppets, and it just went into like a brand-new teacher mode with that enthusiasm. And I just enjoyed it, and I just were watching her, because it kind of switched into that mode. She just brought in, and all of her attention immediately went to him, and you could tell that he felt that.
Well, I can't describe her in one word. I just can't. There's just too many great words and magic to describe her. She is just a genuinely kind, beautiful person, a beautiful soul. So I'm sorry, that's not one word, but she really is. I can't describe it otherwise. She's just such a beautiful person. The world needs more of her.
Professional. Trish is just dynamic with what she does. There's never been a time that you didn't feel confident that, again, the kids and the teachers were invested in her, in Trish.
Amazing.
I just miss her calm. I'm going to miss her calm. Just she made the place just more positive. She would give you the shirt off her back. She's always there for everybody. So there's just so many things that we are going to miss. She just had a huge impact on our school and our students. The students absolutely loved her. She was so dedicated to them.
I will have someone here as early as the morning to open the door for me when I forget my key.
I think, well, I know she's kind, she's just like a rock for our stick team. She is the person who, no matter how crazy it gets, she just keeps it level-headed and handled, and if we have questions, we go to her. She's just kind of been a solid rock for our team for a really long time.
She is so dedicated. There's nothing she wouldn't do for her students or her colleagues. So she always gives 100%, probably 150%. So she's just a very positive force, a calming force, and just spread kindness. She, you know, she's so motherly. She just wants to make sure everyone's, you know, setting what they have to do and what they need. She's just always there for us.
I can say from a professional standpoint, all the teachers would say that she's one of the easiest people to work with, and she's always put you at ease. She's so incredibly knowledgeable, and that's a tough job, special education is a big part of the school system, and having someone like Trish who's such an anchor in the department and is so knowledgeable, it's just made that aspect of your job that much easier. But I know that she's touched countless kids' lives.
I mean, any student or family who's come to have a child and work with her is so lucky. She is, she's the kind of teacher who just puts everything into every student at every time that she's with them. So I think if anyone has something to work with her, this is the luckiest.
Trish, I wish you many more of these, the real deal, and I wish you so much joy and abundant happiness and health going forward. Enjoy your retirement years. You deserve it, you so deserve. Thank you for everything you've done for us. I just love, love working with you. I will miss you tremendously, but you did a job, it was really a job well done, job well done. So I wish you the very best as you go into your retirement.
She's been outstanding to work with. I personally have had the pleasure of working with Trish for 25 years, and she's irreplaceable. I don't know how else I was going to fit that position, but there's no one like Trish, and we're going to miss her. He's humble, she wouldn't want all the credit. I know that, that's just the way that she's always been, but she deserves all the friend in the world, it's such a wonderful job.
I think, yeah, I think her presence is really important here itself, and I think I know I have, and I think we've all learned. I know I learned a ton just from watching her and working with her, and I know a lot of other people here have, so I just think we're going to miss her a lot, so, so, because I remember her the next chapter for her. She's everything like this other time.
So the, our next retiree has worked with Trish for a very long time. And Joanne, are you surprised at all that Trish is not in her own video? Not in the least, right? Because that's just who she is. Next, we'll talk about Principal Joanne Rocco. You know, I was recently told there are three people in the New Canaan Public Schools who know how to work the planetarium. Tim Hague, the head of the Science Department, an astronomy teacher at the high school, and Principal Joanne Rocco. Why, you may ask, does Principal Joanne Rocco know how to work the planetarium? When she began in New Canaan in 1992, she was a science teacher over at South. Now granted, at that time, the planetarium was already getting quite old, but that's beside the point and a different conversation. But after Joanne's first trip to the planetarium, she realized the power it held to catapult a child's imagination, and she committed herself to learning how to run it so she could bring that magic to her students frequently and skillfully as their science teacher. And simply put, that is Joanne Rocco. We have a saying in education, it's "whatever it takes." Joanne personifies that saying. Throughout her 27-year career in New Canaan, she's been a science teacher, an assistant principal, and for the past 15 years, she's been the proud principal of South Elementary School. In each role and on every day, Joanne has been focused on doing whatever it takes to help each and every child learn, grow, and succeed. Truly, her work through the years has been an inspiration to generations of students, parents, and colleagues, and the legacy she leaves behind at South and across the New Canaan Public Schools will be everlasting. As the chairperson of our Crisis Advisory Board, Joanne is tough as they come. She's unyielding in her approach to school and classroom safety, and she's been involved with every significant school safety initiative at our schools over these past seven years. Having served as a principal for 15 years and assistant principal before that, Joanne has been directly involved with and responsible for hiring most of the staff at South School. To them, she's been a leader, a mentor, a colleague, and a friend, and the joy they share as a school community at South radiates throughout the building. From water fights in the courtyard to flash dances during professional learning, Joanne's energy and approach continue to show all of us that we can be passionately committed to the work that we do and still have some fun together while we're doing it. As countless parents have learned through the years, Joanne is an excellent, empathetic listener who can calm nervous kindergarten parents just beginning their New Canaan Public Schools experience as easily as she can reassure those anxious about their children transitioning from fourth grade into fifth at Saks. Joanne knows that raising children is difficult work, and she's always ready, willing, and able to help parents in their times of need. At the same time, Joanne's vision for South has guided the work of the South PTC through the years. An initiative such as the organic garden, the swivel camera stands, the new faculty room, the beautiful landscaping in the front of the building would never have happened without her expert guidance, vision, and support. And that's not even to mention the multiple construction projects that Joanne's overseen and guided throughout her tenure. Parents can relate to Joanne because Joanne understands and can relate to parents, and she always leans into their conversations guided by the love she feels for every child. As if all of that wasn't enough, Joanne shines brightest when she's working with or talking about kids. Mentioned kids, her eyes light up, her face beams, and the love she feels just seems to flow right out of her. Joanne can be as tough as nails, but she also has one of the biggest hearts on the planet when it comes to children. This love guides her thinking, her approach, her decisions, and truly her life, and every student who's gone through South has been a beneficiary. Joanne is beloved by students, parents, faculty, staff, and truly the entire community. She's seen a lot in her 40 years as an educator, and she brings a positive energy to everyone around her. We've been remarkably fortunate to have had her spend 27 years in the New Canaan Public Schools. We're going to miss her terribly. We wish her all of the very best as she transitions into this next phase of her life. Children will always have a place in Joanne's heart, and she will always have a place in ours. Congratulations, Joanne. Thank you for teaching us all so very much these past years. Think I'm getting this figured out?
My favorite thing about my job, I would have to say, is every day coming into this building and interacting with hundreds of people, staff members, students, parents, and it's just the daily interactions with people and the conversations that you have, the stories that you hear, being able to go in classrooms and seeing all of the great teaching and learning, and that's something that I'll really miss every day.
What about the retirement most excites me? Probably just having the time to do things that I haven't had a chance to do, because my day is from 5:00 in the morning until probably 5:00 or 6:00 at night. What most excites me is not commuting on Merritt Parkway, so many boppers every day, and will not miss the traffic on Merritt Parkway, but just, you know, being able to go walks every day, go to the gym, ride my bike, go to places, and not having to bring homework every day, because the day is well extended beyond the 5:00, just with a lot of take-home work that has to be done. So those are the things that excite me, really just more time to do things that I really enjoy that I haven't had a chance to do in the years, in 40 years. I'll miss the people. Absolutely will miss the people, because that's what makes this job what it is. And just coming to work, as I said, every day with all of these wonderful people, and most especially the kids, because the kids just brighten your day every single day, and that's what I'll miss the most. Craziest story of my time at South, when I was a science teacher, we used to do the egg drop. So we would do it from different levels, and one of the levels was from the roof of the school. So one of her parents had a chicken outfit. So I would dress in a chicken outfit, and we would get on the roof of the school and drop the containers and see which one survived. And I had to actually go on a site visit for our principal with our superintendent, so one of our teachers wore the egg costume, the chicken costume. And so when I came back, it was about 5:00, I walked into main office with our superintendent and with a parent who was on the site visit, and then our secretary was in the office, and she said, "I have a little bad news." And I said, "Well, what's that?" And then she said, "Well, this teacher fell off the roof during the egg drop." And I said, "Oh, boy." And I said, "Was he hurt?" And she said, "No." And I said, "Please tell me he wasn't wearing the chicken costume." And he was wearing the chicken costume, and got carted off to the emergency room in a chicken costume, luckily he was fine. Those are stories you don't get when you work in an office. You have to laugh at stuff like that. I just like being visible to kids and showing them that, you know, a principal can be fun, and, you know, hopefully I'm someone that kids will remember positively. And I think, you know, just letting kids know that, first of all, school is hard for kids, because there are a lot of great challenges in education for kids, and we provide them with a great experience, but kids work hard when they're in school. And I think to let the kids know, you have to have fun in your life, and you can't take everything seriously, and that, you know, the times in school that you enjoy earlier, all those traditions and all of the fun times, and we try to really make that part of their school experience, you know, in addition to all of the hard work that kids have to do. It's been the most wonderful experience it really has, and just took a chance for a better career, so I'm a lucky person.
So as Joanne shakes, you know, comes up and you congratulate her, I want to let you know, the editing that occurred on her video was the laughter after the story of the chicken costume. We'd still be watching the video if we didn't edit out the laughter.
Forty years ago, when I started this career, I would never imagine that I had the career that I have had, the experiences that I've had, and just the people that I've met, and just realize how incredibly fortunate that I've been to have 40 years and probably the greatest career you could choose, and 27 years in New Canaan and at South School, which is just such a special place. So I thank all of you for your support during the years, and... So I thank all of you for your support during the years, and just really proud of everybody that I've ever worked with. So thank you all.
So when I mentioned to Joanne Scholman that she was going to go first, she asked me if I was doing it by height. As I mentioned before, it's length of service, and Mr. Cass is our last honoree tonight. You know, they say that lightning doesn't strike the same place twice, but I must tell you, I think it did by bringing Gary Cass to New Canaan not once, but twice over the past 44 years he's been working in education. Gary began in New Canaan as a first-year teacher over at West School, where he taught 6th grade in 1975. I don't know about you, I wasn't teaching in 1975. Over the next 17 years, this young, long-haired professor served as a classroom teacher. I've seen the pictures, Gary. So do I. He served as a classroom teacher, a writing coordinator, a unit leader, best and team district facilitator, coordinator of language arts for the district, and ultimately, he served a year as the interim principal of West School. I'm told his hair grew shorter and shorter with every job. Then after serving the one-year interim position, Gary decided that he enjoyed the principalship. So when the principal returned from his leave that next year, Gary left us to join the Fairfield Public School system as the principal of Burr Elementary. When Fairfield needed to open another school, they knew where to look, and Gary was given the honor of becoming the founding principal of Dwight Elementary School. Gary retired from Fairfield, and in 2012, we were in need of a director of human resources, and in a stroke of genius, we swiftly recruited him to return to the New Canaan Public Schools in that role. So now, in his seventh year of his second tour of duty in New Canaan, Gary has served the district with distinction, commitment, and heart, and we're going to miss him terribly. Gary has, without question, made our district a better place these past years, and we owe him an eternal debt of gratitude. In his role as the Director of Human Resources, I've gotten to know Gary quite well. I can say unequivocally, he is one of the very finest educators and human beings that I've ever known. He leads with heart and courage, and has succeeded in recruiting and supporting world-class professionals who are committed to carrying our outstanding school and district forward. His mantra, which every administrator knows, is "The people we hire have got to love kids." And during his time as Director of Human Resources, we've never wavered from that. Gary's an avid traveler. His many adventures have brought him to the four corners of the globe. He still has a bucket list of places he's going to visit in the future that would fill a swimming pool, and I'm betting that he'll get it all done. Gary lives his life with a positive and optimistic spirit, an engaged mind, and a curious heart. And he has the rare gift of making everyone he comes in contact with feel improved as a result. He's a mentor, a colleague, and a friend, and his every decision always takes into account the humanistic side of our work together. As the Director of Human Resources, there are times when challenging conversations also must occur. And at those times, there's nobody I'd rather have at my side than Gary. He's kind, but he's also strong and courageous, has a wonderful moral compass, and he is truly one of the strongest, most committed people I've ever had the good fortune to call colleague and friend. Gary's legacy will live on in the New Canaan Public Schools for many years, literally. His wonderful daughter, Allison, is one of our superstar teachers at West Elementary School. Recently, Gary was at an end-of-the-year concert in Allison's classroom, beaming like the proud father that he was. While there, one of the parents asked, "Who's your child?" And Gary said, "Allison," without even thinking about it. And that's just who he is. Genuine, authentic, loving, and kind. He leads with his heart, and he inspires those around him to do the same. We've learned so much from Gary, we'll always be grateful. Lightning struck us twice here in New Canaan, and we're all so very lucky that it did. Thank you, Gary, for everything. You remain in our hearts forever. Thank you.
I've had a fantastic experience being the Director of Human Resources. It's a pretty easy job, and one that comes with great rewards. The most important part I do is the hiring of the best people along with our administrators who are in our school district that can make differences in the lives of children. I also work with wonderful colleagues here, and this experience has been unforgettable.
My dad has influenced me greatly in my career. I come from a family of teachers, and after college, I got a job as a teaching assistant. And after the first day, I knew that that's exactly what I was supposed to do. So of course, the first person I told was my dad, and he was thrilled for me. Something really remarkable and special is that we both started our careers right in the same hallway at West School. So my classroom is room 216, and this is room 270, so I can actually stand at the doorway of my classroom and see the classroom that he started as a beginning teacher way before I was even born. So something really special.
One of my favorite memories of Mr. Cass is going all the way back to my first year as superintendent. And as the new superintendent, I thought it'd be great for us to visit all five of the schools on the first day of school, to go to high school, to Saks, to South, to Saks, to East, to West, and try to be there, right, when kids got off the bus, and then we could greet them for the new school year. So we all jumped into one car, went into high school, we went over all the different buildings, and we ended over at West School, because they usually send their latest arrivals. And then we went into West. Gary's gone, couldn't find him anywhere. We were greeting the kids, we were talking, smiling, and looking around at Gary, and then realized, nowhere is. And we ran out of the hallway, went into Allison Cass's classroom, and sure enough, there was Gary, and he started welcoming the kids and seeing everybody again on the new first day of school. So it just showed me right away who Gary is as a person, his love for our work, the kids, for everything we do, and served for his daughter who works for us.
I've had the opportunity to meet so many people over the years that my dad has worked with. And it's so funny and special because they always say the exact same thing. Teachers, secretaries, custodians, they all immediately tell me that he gave them opportunities, that he was so supportive, that they could imagine their career without him, how kind he was, how special he was to them. It's amazing to hear because I know my dad is the best. I think he's the best, and it's great to hear other people kind of think and see the same things that I do. He always tells me that the most important thing is how you treat people, and so that's something that I try to follow in my own life and career as well.
You know, it's a new beginning. Like, it gives me the opportunity to plan for this new beginning and chase my other dreams of spending more time with my family, planning, international travel, and having the time for a deep variety of my other interests.
Some words to describe my dad, caring, compassionate, kind, open-minded, generous, honorable, a teacher, a learner, just the best.
Well, I've been really fortunate, and I've been part of several school districts in my career, and putting in the good work of students ahead of all else. I know that I will miss this great work and all of the people here.
I think the SCBS community will miss my dad positively, his positive attitude, and of course, the success that we were.
To Gary, in the years that, we're all in a business together, he's helped to create the district that we now enjoy and love. There's always a place where we're here, and I hope to see him in the years that, certainly to hear his travels as he continues to work through that very extensive block of systems.
This will do it now. It's this into that one, right? Would you like to take? This will be the last time I have to stay at this podium, so. Really excited about that. But I certainly have so many thanks to give. You know, as a board, I know you're aware, you've got the best staff in the country, and amazing teachers, administrators, all the folks that work on behalf of New Canaan Public Schools. And I know you realize it, and I really am, I'm really quite grateful. So I just have one story to tell. Can't resist. You know, when I wrote my letter of retirement, I used a quote, you know, Fred Rogers' quote. You probably may remember, you know, when you're at the end of something, you're also at the beginning of something else. So when I wrote that, I brought it into Brian's office, and he's reading it, and before he even started reading it, I found it on the floor. But the story is, the very next day, you see how Brian dresses, you know, beautiful suits, and, you know, the next day, he comes to work in his cardigan sweater, his cardigan Mr. Rogers sweater, and his sneakers. And we're all looking, trying to make some sense of what this was all about. Now, the part that he won't admit to probably is that I could also, because our offices are in proximity, I could hear him singing softly. Won't you be my neighbor? So I often say to folks, I've been very grateful for many of the superintendents I've worked with over the years, probably 20 or more. This is the best superintendent I have ever worked with, and I'm very grateful to you and the board and everyone involved in the New Canaan Public Schools. So thank you. Thank you. Five incredible retirees. We always say that the success of the New Canaan Public Schools flows so much through the wonderful staff, the committed people that we have here. We'll take a moment to thank them, go back to the business, but about one more round of applause for every, each one of us.
I'm just thinking about you, Jay.
Forty seconds, and you're marked, it's set.
Wait, we're all Jay's video?
I have videos, I have plenty of videos. Don't worry, Sheri.
You have two minutes.
Plenty of videos. I do, I do have a transition, though. This calls for, I think, a transition. So I have, I have some history with Gary. And my history with Gary is in August of 1985, there was a physical education position open at West School. And Gary interviewed me at West School in the teacher's cafeteria. And the thing that I remember most about that interview was the amount of time he spent asking me how I would work with two physically challenged, a physically challenged 2nd and 3rd grader at West School. And when I heard what Brian said, "You got to love the kids," you know, that's what I will remember about Gary, most part, working with Gary for five years in a school full of inspired, talented educators. And, you know, I would just say that, you know, you are an exemplary educator, and you set such a great tone for everybody at that school, and you're loved by a lot of people. Good luck and good health to you. Okay. So we have, I want to go through a few things tonight. We've had an exceptional year athletically. What I would like to, the way I would like to start would be to thank the board and the administration for all the support that you give to athletics. You know, we have a lot of interest in the community and a lot of talented people, and we have great resources. And so, you know, I want to thank you for that. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Joanne Keating for her patience, having to work with me over financial issues. I want to do a lot of things, and she lets me do a lot of things that are not exactly in the box that they might should be in. And Tracy Haberman is also a saint, in my opinion, because she has to work with me as well. So I really appreciate your patience, and thank you very much. So this year was quite a year for us, even by New Canaan High School standards of athletics. So there's a few highlights that I just wanted to share tonight. Andrew Malling was the first New Canaan High School male cross-country runner to win the FCAC championship in 42 years. Our football team was Class L finalists, we played Greenwich. Greenwich has more girls in the school than we have total students, so I'm not quite sure how we're in Double L, but we were, and we had a great run, and so we were very proud of that. Our girls soccer team was FCAC runner-up, they lost a very close game to Ridgefield, and Ridgefield was the eventual FCAC champion and state Double L champion. We have two outstanding wrestlers in our school right now. They are actually national-level competitors, Tyler Sung and Jason Mastriani. They were both FCAC State Open and New England champions. So that's a series that follows each other, and you have to win to get through that. So that's a tremendous accomplishment for those two, for those two young men. Our boys swim and dive, our boys swim and dive coach actually left at the beginning of the year, and Kat Munson, who's one of our teachers and has been our assistant coach, she took over both our boys and girls program. They were Class L champions and state open runners-up, so they were the second, second-best boys team in Connecticut. And that's actually, that happens in the pool, so, you know, that's really legitimate. So New Canaan has their own version of hu- We look at them, number of participants, which is from our eligibility list. And what I put in the red is the, was last year's numbers, so that you can see we're up participation-wise, any way you look at our participation. Unique athletes is actually the number that we use to determine the percentage of the student body that participates in athletics. And so that's the second chart on the bottom. And so we're still, we're at 70% of the student body participating, and that's, you know, those are the numbers, and those are our numbers this year compared to, you know, the numbers last year, so. I think this is something that I'm really proud of, and I think everybody in New Canaan is really proud of. This is a chart that's put together for champions, state championships and runners-up since the fall of 1961. Our league puts this together. So we won one championship, and we were one runner-up, and so this doesn't have the spring numbers with it, it just, it just has the numbers up to the fall. So the school and the community have a real history of excellence with respect to athletics. A little bit about our coaches. You know, I think Gary was, Gary's speaking about our teaching staff, very talented, very talented teaching staff. I think I would say the same thing about our coaching staff. We are, you know, we have some really terrific coaches that are really dedicated to their sport and to our athletes. And this year, Rich Hickson is our girls' soccer coach. He was named FCAC. So the way they determine FCAC Coach of the Year is you're voted by your peers as far as that award is concerned. And Rich Hickson was the girls' soccer coach of the year. Danny Melzer was the boys' basketball coach of the year. I mentioned Kat Munson. Rich Beulen was the FCAC girls' hockey coach of the year. Chip Buzzio, who was a New Canaan High School graduate and played on some of the Princeton teams that won national championships in lacrosse. He's our boys' lacrosse coach, is a really high-quality person. And Priscilla Schultz is a longtime physical education teacher in New Canaan High School. She said to me the other day, I was congratulating her for her championships, and she said, well, you know, it doesn't, the kids just are good golfers. But the kids have decided, the kids that are good golfers decide they want to play with the program because she's made it something that has pride and there's prestige to it. So sometimes the girls that are golfers will decide to run track or do something else. But in this case, what she's done with the program is made it something that, you know, if you're a good golfer, you want to play on the team. So I think she deserves a lot of credit for that. I think this is just, like, it's interesting to me, and I have, there's a reason why I wanted to show you all this information. So this is certified teachers and that are coaches. So we have 112 total coaching positions. Those coaching positions are filled with, 45 of those positions are filled by certified teachers. Now, it could be the same teacher because there's 112 positions, so it's not, it's not 45 certified teachers, it's 45 teachers that fill those positions, right? So that's a little bit different. So really, the number is only, I would say it this way, only 40% of the 112 positions that we have are filled with certified teachers. And I think this is important because, for two reasons. Since our teachers are so good, and they have such good methodology with respect to teaching and learning, when our, when our students are in an athletic setting, they're looking for the same quality teaching and instruction from the coaches, and they recognize the difference. So I think that's an important reason why we have to continue to work to get as many of our teachers involved in coaching as we can. And the other thing is, people who are professionally prepared to teach and understand teaching and learning, those are the people that are the most effective coaches. Our boys' basketball team this year, there was five coaches on the staff. All five of those coaches are certified teachers. Not, two of them don't work in New Canaan, but they're certified teachers. So I think that's a really important point, and it's going to be important going forward. And I think with some of the decisions that the community and the board will face going forward, you know, I think that's going to be a really, it's going to be a real challenge for us. So I'll talk a little bit about the All Sport Booster Club. I think it's synonymous to me with our athletic program and what makes us successful, and the work that they do as volunteers that are interested in all students, not just a particular sport, I think is very special. So I think they're very special volunteers and really valuable people for our athletic program and our athletes. So again, of those 112 coaching positions, 74 of those positions are funded by the Board of Education, and 38 of those positions are enriched by the donations from the All Sport Booster Club. So 34% of our coaching staff is enriched by the All Sport Booster Club. And this year, the All Sport Booster Club donated $133,022 for coaching salaries. So I think that's important. I think that's a good thing. You know, I think it's a good thing for us from a budget perspective, and it's a good thing for us from a community interest perspective. And, you know, the best way to enrich a program is by lowering the coach-to-athlete ratio, and that's what this is, that's what they're helping us do. This is not that easy to see, so I hope you can see it on your chart. It's a, somebody, I think it was the Dariann Athletic Director, asked similar-type schools to respond to the number of coaching positions that they had in these sports where there's generally large numbers. And so we all responded. And so, you can see the numbers. So in these sports, in these select sports, Dariann had 44 positions, Greenwich had 53 positions, Wilton had 43 positions, we had 34 positions. These are Board of Education-funded positions. Staples had 40, and Ridgefield had 38. So I guess, you know, this again, I would look at this as something that's positive. We're doing a lot. So the cumulative effect of this with the private support, as well as what the board is providing, is, you know, allowing us to really have great results. But I thought that just might be interesting to you. Again, back to the All Sport Booster Club, the way that, I think, in them enriching the athletic program at New Canaan High School, just some examples of what has happened and what continues to happen. I mentioned lower the coach-to-athlete ratio. There's just been an 18-month Fitness Center renovation project, and we're right, getting ready to kick off an athletic wing beautification program that will start Saturday and carry on through the summer. We received a $25,000 donation for that beautification project, which, get you the letter. The letter's coming. So our fitness center, maybe some of you have seen it, some of you haven't, we've talked about it, I've talked about it some with this, with the board. So this is the fitness center, the way it looks now after the renovation. There are four, there are three aspects of equipment that we were interested in upgrading. One was functional training, the functional training equipment. So this is balls, bands, medicine balls, and so forth. And so that's, that's one of our components of comprehensive strength and conditioning. And our cardio machines are the second component of that. We received a $15,000 donation from the Bennett family, and we purchased five of those free walk, pre-core trainers, one Stairmaster, and three Recumbent bikes. So that's something that happened, I think, around mid-year. And this is the strength, these are some of the, some of the new strength and strength equipment that we have. So, you know, we, these three components of a comprehensive strength and conditioning program is what we have in that room. So I have a confession, so sometimes when we're playing basketball and we want to just get a little intimidation factor, I make sure that I leave the lights on in the fitness center as we walk the visiting basketball team past there, so.
It's working.
It's working, yeah. Yeah. So this is supposed to be a secret, but, so the north, the south end of the building, which faces the north end of the stadium, there's a red strip across the top of the building that was painted last summer. So over the weekend, we're going to start, we're going to paint Home of the Rams in these white letters that you see there on the top of the building with the ram head. So not too many people will know, so I think it'll be something, a nice surprise for graduation for everybody, so. Although we're on TV, so maybe it's not.
All the retirees' families have already turned it off.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably just, it's just us. So a couple other programs, I think it's important for everyone to be, for you guys to be aware of. The All Sport Booster Club runs an extensive summer camp program, and that's one of the primary sources of revenue for the Booster Club. But that, to me, that's a win-win-win situation. We get to provide quality activities for people in the community. Our coaches get to, you know, create some revenue for themselves, but most importantly, there is revenue created for us to be able to bring back into the program, and mostly in the form of, you know, those additional coaches. So that's something that's been going, that's over 20 years that program has been going on at New Canaan High School, and it's very, I think it's a win-win-win all around. The All Sport Booster Club runs and administers a strength and conditioning program, which happens during the school year as well as in the summer. And I mentioned last year when I was here that we have a partnership with Performance Athletics, which they're a physical therapy group. They also provide us with the additional athletic trainers in the fall. They bring a lot of science to the design of the programming, and we're happy to get involved with them. Even more so, we're doing evaluations on each athlete prior to their conditioning program for the following season, looking at their strengths and weaknesses, and then designing programs based on what we discover when we do these analyses. So that's something I think we'll get a lot of benefits from in the future. And then throughout the season, as well as in the preseason, we, the Booster Club sponsors sports-specific camps and clinics, which help athletes get ready for their upcoming seasons. Our initiatives for 2018 and '19 were to get some kind of live streaming program going and to introduce the electronic ticket sales, which we did. So our live stream program, now, how would I do this? So anyway, this is an example of, if you haven't seen it, this is an example of what the live stream in the gym looks like. This is a fully automated camera, and if there's a, there's an algorithm that by each sport determines where the camera, how the camera follows the ball. This is what it looks like from out in the stadium, and it's the same thing. I think lacrosse, some sports, I think it tracks the ball better than others, but, so these are the two places that we have cameras. The Booster Club funded the $6,000 worth of cost of installing these cameras. The relationship that we have with the National Federation of High School Sports is some of revenue-sharing relationship that the Booster Club has with them, which is not really much revenue, and it wasn't really done with the idea of creating revenue. It was done with the idea of creating a service for our community, and I think it's accomplished that. I'll talk about live streaming in a minute because I think it's something that you all will, you want to have, there's things about live streaming that the board and I think the community will have to consider going forward. And the electronic tickets, so for each game, we would get a printout of what we sold, the levels, if it were Booster Club tickets, if it was, you know, and any transactions that were done electronically would allow us to get this printout of, and, you know, help in, I'd say, as a cash control as far as the gate receipts are concerned. This was not easy to implement. It took, we had, we spent a lot of volunteer hours with it. Our Booster Club folks spent a lot of volunteer hours with it. The district spent a lot of time with helping us with technology because it has to do with the Wi-Fi at the entry point, and when there's 3,000, it's fine if there's 20 people there, but when there's 3,000 people there and everybody's trying to download their tickets at the same time, it can be problematic. So we have implemented this program. We're going to continue to refine it. We're working with GoFan, who's a provider that we're using. State of Connecticut uses GoFan as well, so, you know, we think it's a good, it's a good company, but it's, and so, you know, it's something that we have implemented, it's working. We used it for basketball, and we used it for lacrosse as well. And so it's gotten us, got us going in the right direction as far as, as far as the cash, cash control is concerned. So just a few minutes about live streaming. We, the streaming that we have is the National Federation of High School Sports. There is another platform, it's called PlayOn. It's a group that's local. They have one way that they, they have people sitting in some studio in Stanford, and they're running the cameras on the games. The cameras are in remote locations. They have a much higher, they had a much higher price tag than the National Federation of High School Sports. I don't know, because that's local, and I don't know, you know, what their exposure is, so it's hard to tell what's going to happen with them going forward. But Dariann has a model where they have hired someone to be the broadcaster, and they've put significant resources to it, and they are producing more of what looks like something you would see on TV as far as the programming is concerned. The thing about that, that we found out when it came time to broadcast the Turkey Bowl, it's, the Turkey Bowl was our home game, so we thought we could, we had the rights to broadcast it. Nobody seems to know who has the rights to broadcast home, high school home contests. And this is something everybody's going to have to figure out. I know the FCAC, our league, I've talked to them about this. I think we will have to figure that out, you know, as the communities will have to figure that out. Whose content is that? You know, so who has the right to broadcast your games? Does Dariann, or not Dariann, but anybody have the right to come in and put cameras in your stadium and broadcast your games, and they could possibly be charging for it? So I don't really, you know, these are answers that are going to have to be thought about and some direction be given, you know, going forward. tickets at the same time, it can be problematic. So we, we, we have implemented this program. We're gonna continue to refine it. We're working with GoFan, who's a provider that, that we're using. State of Connecticut uses GoFan as well. So, you know, we think it's a good, it's a good company, but it's, and so it's, you know, it's something that we have implemented. It's working. We used it for basketball, and we used it for lacrosse as well. And so, it's gotten us, got us going in the right direction as far as, as far as the cash, cash control is concerned. So just, just a few minutes about live streaming. We, we, the streaming that we have is the National Federation of High School Sports. There is another platform. It's called PlayOn. It's a group that's local. They have one way that they, they have people sitting in some studio in Stanford, and they're running the cameras on the games. The cameras are in remote locations. They have a much higher, they had a much higher price tag than the National Federation of High School Sports. I don't know, because that's local, and I don't know, you know, what their exposure is, so it's, it's hard to tell what's gonna happen with them going forward. But Darian has a model where they have hired someone to be the broadcaster, and they've put significant resources to it, and they are producing more of what looks like something you would see on TV as far as the programming is concerned. The thing about that, that we found out when it came time to broadcast the Turkey Bowl, it's, the Turkey Bowl was our home game, so we thought we could, we had the rights to broadcast it. Nobody seems to know who has the rights to broadcast home, high school home contests. And this is something everybody's gonna have to figure out. I know the FCAC, our league, I've talked to them about this. I think we will have to figure that out, you know, as, as the communities will have to figure that out. Whose content is that? You know, so who has the right to broadcast your, your games? Does Darian, or not Darian, but anybody have the right to come in and, and put cameras in your stadium and broadcast your games, and they could possibly be charging for it? So I, I don't really, you know, these are answers that are gonna have to be thought about and, and some, some direction be given, you know, going forward. Our program, our program in New Canaan High School is linked back to our TV broadcasting group and Roman Sobolski and the work that all those kids do. And what we discovered when we had, we ended up having the Darian and Canaan group work together to broadcast the Turkey Bowl, because we didn't really have the answers to who's, who could do it, and it wasn't really worth fighting over. But what we discovered was our program is student-centered. And we have students doing everything in our program. We have students, you know, that, that, it's basically an educational experience for our students. And the program in Darian, they had three or four students, and they had a professional that they paid, so they're much different. And I, I would suggest to you that, you know, expanding on and, and, you know, trying to continue with the educational model as far as TV broadcasting is an awesome, it's an awesome model. You know, the kids get linked into it, they get excited about it, you know, they go out and, and they get inspired to go out as far as their careers are concerned. And there's a lot of great things that have happened. You know, I'd like to give a shout out to Roman for all the work that he does. He does all the work, all the time, as far as video and, and this program is, is concerned. So, having said that, thinking about the future, what do we want to be able to do as far as a school district is concerned with respect to videos? We saw some tonight with the retirees. And, you know, so what, what capabilities do we want to have as far as athletics, as far as performing arts, as far as outside of New Canaan High School, live streaming, things that our students are doing? And I think that's gonna be really some, it's gonna be some, will, will be something that's worth thinking about going forward. I know that, I'm not sure what I know about streaming in high school sports. I don't think anybody knows where that's going. You know, we're, we're gonna stay with the National Federation of High School Sports probably for another season and see what happens, but it's continually evolving. And I think it's gonna be something that, you know, not that we would wanna get involved with this, but it may be, and there may be advertising that gets attached to it. There may be a lot of implications for, there's a, there's appetite for that, for, for, for watching streamed events, so. Anyway. So, for two, for two thousand nineteen, twenty, what, from administrative initiative perspective, we would like to continue to work on our online ticket sales. We try to get people more comfortable with pay, with buying their tickets electronically, so that will help us, again, with the cash control. I don't think, I can't see the day where we will not be able, where we won't be able to sell, we won't have to sell tickets at the gate conventionally with cash. But I think we can continue to, you know, work on with our opponents and with everyone in New Canaan, make it more comfortable for them, shorter lines, different incentives for them to buy their tickets online. So, you know, we would, we would, we're gonna continue to work on that this coming year. I, I, I personally would like to continue and improve the work that we do with our captains. We have Ceni Workington, who has been awesome. She's volunteered to work with me on our captain's workshop sessions for the last five years, and we've continued to refine the program. These are the general topics that we have each time we meet with the captains. We meet with the captains six times throughout the season. To sit there with these, with these team captains, and particularly to listen to them share the challenges that they have with leadership, and listen to them share their solutions with each other, it's something that is, it's, it's, it's very inspiring, and they're really amazing. And it's gotten, it's gotten to be, that's gotten to be the most important work that we do. We started out, you know, having, telling them things about their, their jobs, and now we're to the point where they're just sharing their solutions and their leadership strategies with each other. But it's something that we, we feel that we can continue to build on. I think it does have a really positive effect on, on the school, on the school culture. I would like to say before I forget, I've been in New Canaan for a while, been at New Canaan High School for a while. I think this group of seniors and the climate and the culture in New Canaan High School, it was particularly friendly, cooperative, and positive this year. And I think, I would just like to say, I think Bill Egan deserves a lot of credit for that, the work that he's done and the time that he's been here.
(laughing)
So we do my evaluation tomorrow, right? I, 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 I do think that that's true. And it's been, it's been, it's been a great year all the way around, particularly though, I know this sounds kind of not like, doesn't mean it much, but the kids are really friendly. You know, really friendly and really enjoyable to work with. So it's, it's, it's been a great year. So I have one, I have one kind of big idea for next year, and I'm gonna show you this. It's a thirty-second video that I first saw a couple weeks ago when I went to the Loyola Penn State Boys Lacrosse Playoff Game. I was sitting there, waiting for the game to start, and this came up on the, on the video screen there, and I thought, I think this is something that might have an application for us at New Canaan High School. So just try to listen, listen to the words in, as they go through this.
If I lose, I'll respond with respect.
If I win, I'll back that up with humility.
If I fail, I'll rise up on. It's time for us to be all online.
Don't want to do my hard work for the poor sportsmanship.
Respect is the name of the game.
So my idea is that, working with Roman and TV broadcasters, that we'll plug our, we'll plug our captains into that. And we'll, we'll have our captains, we'll have a video of our captains, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that, we'll use that as a way to, to foster these concepts of sportsmanship that are something that we have to continually work on. It doesn't mean that, you know, anything's wrong with what it is now, but it just is, it's a part of our, our responsibility as far as educational athletics is concerned. So again, thank you all for your constant, continued support. Very much appreciated by everyone.
Thanks, Jay. It's great work. Any questions? Diana?
Thanks, Jay. I, it's a great year. It's exciting to see all the accomplishments of all the high school students. I do have a couple questions. First, I completely agree with you. I think the forty percent teacher-coach, it's, it's great, but I would encourage anything we can do as a district to get more teachers as coaches. I know we've talked about this a couple years, and I don't know if you have any thoughts about what, you know, we can do as a district to encourage more teacher-coaches? I don't know if we have to, you know, look outside of New Canaan and, you know, if we've kind of tapped out New Canaan teachers or, you know. So what are your thoughts?
Well, actually, right now, I think we are identifying, we, we find qualified teaching candidates, and they have interest in coaching. It's always, it always finds, that, that always finds its way to me, that, you know, we're hiring a science teacher, for example. We're actually hiring, for real. We're really hiring a science teacher who is a track athlete and, you know, has a, is a very accomplished track athlete, who actually sent me an email, and he's interested in coaching. So that's, you know, that's, that's tremendous.
Something about track and science.
Yeah. What's that?
I said something about track and science.
Yeah, right. Well, he's...
The second one, right?
Jay does send an email around each season to let the coaches, let the teachers know, open coaching positions, and to encourage their, you know, they're reaching out and connecting with him if they're interested in doing it. We are, the folks we hire often do have collegiate experience in athletics in different ways. And when we do, when they do, we always try to connect them and at least establish that relationship to begin. It's not necessarily a great thing for a first-year coach, teacher, to get too involved, you know, outside of the classroom, but we certainly encourage folks to, you know, connect and to share their expertise in those ways. But I think, Jay, I think your email is an excellent approach to let people know what's available and to encourage them, let them know that it is something that we support and we want to try to promote as much as we can.
And one of the questions that I have as principal, I know Brian does as well, is what else can you do for New Canaan High School that's outside of the classroom? So, one of those things might just be sports, it might be other things as well.
Okay.
That's what we can do.
Totally unrelated, but going over to the live streaming. So as we sort of do this more often and for more sports, it, do we get it like a permission, like, kind of like when we give, do we get permission from parents like we do for images throughout the school? Because I just, my, my concern is, I think it's wonderful, and I think it's great for parents to be able to access their kids' games, but at some point, we lose control of that digital image, and I don't, I just don't know what our...
Good question.
...liability is, and I just would want to know what control we have over that, you know, process.
I, I don't know.
It's a public performance. It's in the public space.
So how do we do that with images, though?
People are on a field, or people are in a court, participating in a public activity. I don't, my understanding is that there's not a privacy expectation when students are competing in an athletic event because it is in a public space and a public performance.
But our, our schools are public spaces, and we ask for...
I mean, our classrooms and other, there's an expectation of some privacy throughout the day, but there's not an expectation of privacy when performing in a public space, because it's open to the public. It's my understanding. I'm glad to get more information for it.
Yeah.
But it is, you know, that, that's, that's how it was explained to me when we looked into this and we're, we're talking about doing it. The...
I just think about images of, there've been some athletic contests that have had some less-than-flattering things revealed in those contests, and those images would be captured and, and displayed. And I just, I understand when somebody's iPhone does it, but when the school is backing that capturing of those images, I just would want to understand.
Well, as you saw, the, in the short, in the shot, yeah, we can look into it.
Yeah, I just, I think...
It's really, it is focused on the, on the court or on the field, you know, it's, it's not necessarily, it's not hitting the, the stands or anything like that. But the... But it's certainly something we can learn more about, and as it becomes more pervasive throughout the region. I will say that quite a few schools do have that NFHS system, as Jay was talking about. And it is a great way to, if you can't get to the game, even the Turkey Bowl was, I think, streamed through that this year. And is able to watch, actually, folks at home were able to watch, that's true. But the, but it is a way to sort of stake today. So it's a great tool.
Yeah, no, as a fan, it's awesome.
We can look into that, that specific question.
Yeah, I just would like to understand a little bit more.
Sure.
And then, just the final question I had is, you know, hold on, sorry. Sorry, I wrote down all these questions, and I'm like, where do we get the, oh, the, the commercial, or the little sportsmanship thing. It was just a comment that, you know, in addition to promoting it through your leadership program, it might be a great thing, we have all these great signboards that you put so much up during the games. You know, whatever you decide to use, it, it's, it's good for everybody. It's not just good for the, to the captains, so.
No, no, that's, I didn't do a good job explaining it, because that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm excited about. We can put them on the TVs in the school in the winter when we're not outside with the board. So I think it's a way for a, a group that already has, you know, some capacity for leadership within the student body to be able to, you know, kind of walk the walk, right? So, you know, this is...
I think the key is our students will be the actors in the video that we create, and it'll be shown prior to games on the field, in the, in the gym, anything else. But it'll be our players, who our kids know, who will be acting in the, in the PSA itself. I think that's a really, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that should be fun.
Sorry. And I lied, I do have one more question. Sorry. The, could you just explain, yeah, this is it. Sorry, they're totally unrelated.
I'm timing you.
Sorry. With the electronic ticketing, so with the basketball and lacrosse, what percentage of the tickets were sold electronically? I mean, did you take any, like, could people pay cat? How did that work?
The smaller percentage was sold electronically, except when people were motivated to buy them, like, for the Turkey Bowl, and when they, we made, we sent an announcement out about our Greenwich High School game because of father-and-son rivalry in football, that we probably thought we would have a finite number of tickets. So when we made it, when we made people aware that there was something special going on, then the electronic tickets were something that people took advantage of. When they didn't think that there was any particular urgency, they didn't really take advantage of it. So, this is something, whether we have one short line and one long line for people that come up to buy tickets or figure out some way to incentivize people to, you know, to use the online capacity to buy the tickets, so.
Bigger fee.
I have one suggestion in that regard, which is, have we thought about offering like a, you know, full-year pass for families, so that, you know, they could pay, I don't know, seventy-five dollars, whatever the number is?
Join a Booster Club.
There you go.
That's, that gets you there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Jen?
Information's available on the website.
Information's available on the website.
Exactly. So I want to thank you, first of all. This is a great presentation, and I've seen you in action, and your job is not easy, and the way you manage people and students and, you know, I think I've said this before, but one of the most impressive things that I've seen, when you're handling a really difficult situation, you're like, it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids, and it's the coaches, you know, it's, you do such a great job, so thank you, because I know it's not always easy. So, I'm a huge fan of the streaming of the games. I've had quite a few parents talk to me about, like, soccer and, you know, all the different games. I know we had some issues with some of the filming in the basketball this year. And I don't know, like, do you, do you track revenue on, on, I mean, I know we don't, we're not doing this to make money, per se, but like, is there demand? Like, did you see a lot of demand in the dunning and the basketball court filming this year?
Well, I, I didn't track the revenue, which I, which I will, I will do, because I'm interested in that. The other thing I didn't mention about that is, we were able to make the youth lacrosse group avail, groups aware that we could also stream them. So we did link into the youth lacrosse games that were played in the stadium. It's facility, it's tied into the facility. I'm not one hundred percent sold on that it's the best quality, though, and I think that's something I want to work on over the summer. The NFHS is meeting tomorrow with ten or eleven other schools in the state of Connecticut. So that, this, that, that whole, that, they'll probably be the predominant network in Connecticut as far as high school, streaming high school athletics is concerned.
Well, the advantage of the technology, as I understand it, Jay, is that you communicate with the company that you bought the camera from, and it's fully automated, right? The problem with high, with filming high school sports can be the personnel problem, getting the people there to man the cameras, to produce whatever the video is. With this system, you can stream freshman JV and varsity events all in the same day, and it's just, it's the algorithm and the software that actually does the filming. So it really does solve that big problem of staffing and personnel, and make it available quality. May, you may pay for it a little bit in the quality, but I think the availability may outweigh that.
Well, and hopefully you can say, I mean, just the whole, like, the glitching of the games, like, I mean, clearly, there's some...
Yeah, I don't think that these platforms, these platforms that people are presenting, I don't think they're one hundred percent foolproof or, or developed either. I think they're rushing to market with a lot of these products, because they're, they want, they want to get, they have, the market is, getting in the market, now is the time to get into the market.
Yep.
Huddle, which is, it's a, it's a nationwide company that does analysis. It started with football, and it does the breakdown of, of all sports. They are now moving into the live stream, so they want to integrate live streaming with coaching, videos that coaches can use, and that coaches can use with, with, with students. Our basketball coach said something interesting to me the other day. He was at a, it's back to the whole streaming thing. He was, he was at a clinic, and a college coach was talking about how ineffective group meetings and group video sessions were, that they are now doing individual meetings and individual film sessions, just because of the way they learn and the way their students are used to receiving information. So, you know, I think there's, again, I brought that up tonight because I think it's, you know, our job is to, or our job as educators, to forecast what's coming next or what's gonna be out in the future. And I think this is really gonna be a big thing as far as athletics.
I also agree with you about having the students, because that, that was so cool when they were up at Mahagan Sun, and that was awesome. They did such a great job. All right, so one more quick thing. I'm not sure if this is the right forum, but the whole transportation, like, are we gonna, is there gonna be any, anything, new updates with transportation for sports for next year, or?
I think we have to, there are things that we have to work on. There, we have, we and everyone else has challenges with the shortage of bus drivers because of the low unemployment rate, and there's barriers about getting people certified, and there's been some preliminary discussions with DADCO about how we could help solve our problem, but it is a, it's something that we really have to talk about. It's budgetary implications, you know, if it's not, it's not, there's a lot of issues related to that. And we... And we, there may be some answers as far as getting drivers that are, that are trained to drive, um, school charters only, after-school charters only, maybe a retired person or somebody that's a TA during the day that could supplement their income. But I think we have to get creative now and we have to start thinking about that in different, in a way that, different than we have in the past, cause I can't see how things are gonna go back to where they were two or three years ago, where we never had an issue with a bus, there were always as many available as we needed and everyone never got canceled, that we never had any of these challenges as far as, you know, the constraints that the co, the bus company has on them as far as transportation. So I, I do think we have to do something different going forward than we've done in the past.
It's also happening in other towns. I mean, I was with a friend who's a Westport lacrosse coach and their bus arrived an hour late, um, so their game started an hour late.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Britt?
Could you talk a little bit more about the captains workshops? Like, how many students are in that every season? How long does it meet? When do they meet?
Uh, I would say it's about twenty or twenty-two, uh, twenty-two students. It's six times in a season and we meet during the school day. And, um, we, we, we chart out the days that they're gonna meet so that it impacts the one, it impacts a period only once, never, it never impacts the same period twice in the course of the season.
So it's like a six-hour?
So it's a one period, it's a forty-five, I'm sorry, it's a forty-five minutes, a class, it's one class period, six meetings and they're one class period in length.
And does it show up anywhere on their transcript or anything that they're in this? Are they in it multiple times or just once? If you're a captain, you only take this once? Say you're a captain in the fall and then
If you're a captain of multiple sports, you're gonna participate during your season. Cause we, we feel like it's, I mean, I think it's important education that's taking place for that student and it just happens to be different than them sitting in a classroom, learning about something in a classroom.
I just worry sometimes that the high achievers, more stuff gets put on their plate and, you know, if they'll be responsible for doing the video. Sometimes it's hard in junior and senior year. Is it mandatory or do they have a choice?
Well, we don't have any junior captains.
Only seniors?
So it's, our, our leadership model is seniors unless there's an extenuating circumstance where there's no seniors and no seniors that wanna be captains. They are told that if there is anything in the classroom that they are, they, they feel like they can't miss, that their priority is their academic work. And they're never penalized. Is it mandatory? It's recommended, but it's not mandatory, like, and they won't lose their captainship if they don't come to the meeting. But frankly, they wanna come to the meetings, you know? It's something that is a positive aspect of, uh, for them with their peers. So it's, it's not something they're being forced to do. I, I don't, I've never, we've never got that feedback.
Do, oh, you survey them or how do you evaluate the program?
Uh, we evaluate the program, uh, at the last, we have a written evaluation and that when we do the debriefs at the end of the program.
Any other questions? Penny?
Not a question, just a comment. Fabulous year, keep up the good work and thank you very much. We've heard the research about the, uh, how great athletics bring up and great extracurriculars bring up great academics and I think the two of them work together. So I really appreciate all the work that you're doing to make it a fabulous program.
Thank you.
For 70% of students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. I just, one other update, we, um, we spent some time, week and a half or so ago with, um, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, just to, you know, work on advancing the ball there. So we'll be back, um, you know, at some point, maybe in the summer or the early fall as to, uh, next steps there.
Great.
All right. Uh, next on the list is the solar project update with Mr. Clark and Mr. Robbins.
It's coming to the high school, hey.
It's coming.
So, uh, for your information, Mark Robbins is the consultant we've been working with from, um, MHR and he's been providing us with all of his expertise and guidance for the solar project. So he'll be assisting Dan with the presentation tonight.
Thanks for bearing with us.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for bearing with me. I think I took the twelve-hour medicine instead of the twenty-four, so. Allergy season. But I'm an outdoors guy, so that, that comes with the territory. Uh, anyway, excuse me, yes, very exciting to, uh, this is after about two years of planning and research and, um, looking at our roofs and so the, there we are, the South School. Um, you can see on the right is the bus drop off roof and, uh, roof and the, uh, second grade, our fourth grade on the left side. So just to give you some bearings, this was a picture taken by Dave Gussage with his drone. But, uh, we like it because it really captures, you've heard me talk about the number of elevations, the number of actually different roof systems that we have there. And it's difficult to count at that angle, but you can certainly see on the right side towards the back is the gym, is the cafeteria, more towards the front, an elevated space there, that's the, the gymnasium. So that's really twenty-six different little roof projects. We started the design last year after receiving the funds through capital and that allowed us to go through a very thorough investigation of the roof, uh, created great bid specs that we used at the end of, uh, last, uh, actually just before the holidays and went out to bid early this year. Uh, that's a good model to continue to do as we go through the rest of the schools. But it allowed us to be able to get the bids and, um, receive eight bids, actually. I'm sorry, we had eight different contractors go through on the bid walkthrough and we received four bids. So that's very good to have. These are very large and complex projects. You don't usually see a, a high number of people coming to building, uh, projects like that, but we were fortunate to have eight and went through the process. Four submitted bids and we awarded it to the lowest qualified bidder, Greenwood Industries. They have a lot of experience working in the public area, especially schools. Uh, we chose them because of that experience and all their qualifications of their staff, uh, work that was just, uh, very similar to ours. They were the lowest price as well. Uh, their experience, their references were great. They completed a very difficult job at Danbury High School and I happen to know the project manager for the construction company that hired them, so I was really able to get a lot of, uh, in-depth, uh, information and make sure that we were choosing the right contractor. So we're very, excuse me, we're very excited about that. The, uh, the kickoff, trying to keep a sports theme to it a little bit, is, uh, we have a planning meeting on June 12th where we're having all the parties come in, the contractor, uh, HB Fishman, who is the architect that designed the job and will be down here three days a week, uh, overseeing the job. But we also had great help from the, the city, uh, the health department, uh, Brian Platts and the building department, just to make sure that they are, uh, in step with us in terms of the design and how the whole process went. And, um, our schedule, we plan to start June 20th and complete the project in August 23rd, weather permitting. So we really need to have, uh, a very good weather to be able to do this job, um, throughout the course of the summer and, uh, we're very confident with our backup plans, how we're going to be able to make up, uh, days when we weren't, weren't able to work. So that in itself is, uh, is a great project. We're very excited about it and segueing into, now we have a brand-new roof, always looking for energy conservation opportunities and measures to reduce the cost of our, uh, fuel and electrical consumption. We were awarded, applied for and awarded Z-Rex, or renewable energy credits, and we engaged Mr. Robbins as an expert that's gonna help us through this. And what you see up there is what Mark has placed as, uh, could be a design for the location of the solar panels. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Mark to talk a little bit more in-depth about the solar panel project and the bid specs themselves.
Thank you. We scheduled this last so that we could re-energize you with an exciting topic.
Nice.
So this is a, uh, really a terrific example of implementing solar on a school because the stars aligned to deliver what I think is one of the best case studies or return on investment. The net effect will be to generate about 76% of the current energy required by the school using renewable energy. So that's very close to bringing it to a net zero. The system is a net, uh, um, net metered system, which means that the school remains grid-tied and the excess power, so as you can imagine, solar energy has peaks which occur in the summer and that extra energy is fed back into the grid. The current meter is replaced with a two-way net meter, uh, in connection with applying for renewable energy credits, which is a fifteen-year term of funding that the owner of that meter will receive to offset the system cost. They also, uh, uh, will be grandfathered and the utility will buy back the power or credit the energy generated at the prevailing retail rates for the lifetime of the system. So that's, that's an exciting benefit as well. So the, what that means is weekends, uh, summertime, when the system's over-generating, that power's fed back to the grid and the school district will receive a credit to draw upon in the winter months. And that trues up annually. So this system will generate about 420,000 kilowatt-hours a year, um, in electricity and that represents, as I said, about 75% of the total energy demand for the building. And, um, by, uh, integrating the solar system right after the roof is rebuilt, it will actually help protect the roof membrane, the portion of the roof that's under the panels, it will extend the life because those panels are absorbing the solar radiation, not the rubber roof membrane. And another benefit, which is hard to quantify, is a cooling effect. So if you imagine going to a beach and being under an umbrella, it keeps you a couple degrees cooler, the same thing happens with the solar panels, so it backs off a little bit on the AC, uh, the wear and tear on the AC equipment. Uh, so the kit of parts, they're all what we call tier one, they're Bloomberg-rated, investment-grade inverters, racks and, um, panels. And, uh, you hear a lot about, um, solar technology's not been a great movement, um, in panels, there's no moving parts, there's, there hasn't been terrific advances in that piece of the industry or that portion, it's really been in the conversion of direct current to alternating current and that's become much more efficient. So this package, um, will be owned and maintained by a third-party, an investment entity, which will enjoy the investment tax credit, the 30% investment tax credit and so forth. So if you can imagine, it's sort of like a vending machine that we get to design, but there's no cost to operate it, no upfront investment by the Board of Ed. So the ROI is basically infinite. It'll save about $50,000 a year based on current energy cost and is projected to save about 1.4 million over a 20-year term or a, close to 1.8 million if it's extended out to a 25-year term. So that's a little bit about the savings projections. Uh, there will, we have designed, it was part of the RFP, to have telemetry so that we could have constant visibility as to how the system's working and, and tracking it against, um, uh, weather data. So there'll be an energy kiosk in the lobby and that can be, uh, programmed into STEM. And, um, uh, yep, so part of the reason why we landed on this particular contractor is their installation crew, their electrician has done a lot of work in New Canaan, uh, their on-call, uh, electricians with, uh, St. Luke's School and, uh, they've done a lot of work at St. Mark's Church. They actually installed a solar system at St. Mark's Church, so they had a track record here in town. Uh, the net cost will be about four cents, so the school, again, is not investing in any of the equipment, they're simply buying the energy in connection with what's called a power purchase agreement. And that energy will be fixed-priced at about four cents, four cents and change, four and a half cents. We're, we're still, uh, tuning up the actual kit of parts and the term of that agreement, uh, but it's in a range of four cents versus sixteen and a half cents, which is what the combined cost of the transmission and the supply power. Uh, so South School, think of it going from sixteen and a half cents down to a, a little over four cents, fixed for 20 or 25 years, net savings over a million. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So where we're at right now is, uh, Davis Hill is the low bidder and we actually had three bids, uh, six bids received and we had extensive interviews with the, the three finalists and we're working with, uh, Davis Hill preparing a draft PPA. They will be in attendance at the kickoff meeting on Thursday, just so we have all the different parties represented so we can, uh, hit the ground running, so to speak, on the 20th. Excuse me. So the work itself is planned to begin on the solar side when 50% of the roof surfaces have been completed. This way we can bring the, the solar people in and they can follow the roofers as they finish the job. All along, John Spanville will have a representative there, making sure that one, not only is the roof installation on its own, going to meet all the specs and the requirements to maintain a 30-year roof warranty for this. Also though, they're going to be watching after the arrays are placed on the roof to make sure that no work that was done by the roofer in any way conflicts or causes any damage to the roof. So they'll supervise that and, but also verify that everything still complies with the, with the roof warranty. Of course, it's very, very important to us, uh, to make sure that we, we do it on time, but we also do it properly. So we're, we had, we feel we have a very good plan. And just so you know, while the building is open, is closed for the summer, the South School, we really need to work hard to maintain a safe work site. So for most of the summer, that both entrances from Gower Road or off, off Farm Road will be closed because there's gonna be a lot of construction activity, big trucks delivering materials and, and insulation and so forth, dumpsters, so a lot of activity there. But we do plan at one point to be able to have access for the teachers. We don't know really where that is yet, we're, we're believing it'll probably be from the Gower roadside, but we'll keep, we'll keep the staff informed and, to make sure that they have plenty of time to come back in before the school opens. Because in addition to what we've already talked about with the solar and the roof, of course, is we have other projects that are continuing on our capital budget, repointing the brickwork. Last year, may remember, we did the chimneys above the roof and that was in preparation for knowing that we're not gonna have access to the roof to do that work, so we did it last year. There will be some more brickwork up there, but that's more related to what the roofer's required to do. We're also gonna be, of course, are repainting, we have a number of areas to continue to paint in the building to keep that spruced up and fresh. We're gonna be installing, uh, air conditioning in the gymnasium, actually, all three elementary schools will be getting air conditioning in the gymnasiums. And, um, a lot of other smaller miscellaneous target maintenance jobs, um, that we, we have while the building's closed. So that's what we have for tonight. It's gonna be a busy summer, thank you for helping us get to this point. We'll certainly keep you updated as we go along through the summer and, and the progress that we're hoping to make.
Thank you. Any questions?
Could I, I would like to just mention one thing. We're working on the PPA to finalize that. We spent a few hours with our attorney today on the phone and we'd like to bring that to the Board on the 24th for your review and approval. It is a 20-year contract and we do have a non-appropriation clause in the contract, but it is something that we feel is just so significant, we would like to bring it to the Board for approval.
Yeah, I agree, it makes sense.
So we'll get to your advance about the maintenance.
Great. Any questions?
Julie?
So, very exciting, obviously, and, um, commend you on all the work. Just curious, the timeline is, is tight, obviously, taking us pretty up close to the start of school. So it says weather permitting, so what, what sort of plans are in place if it, if weather does mess with, with the progress in terms of, you know, students and teachers and safety and all that?
Well, one of the questions that we asked the contractors is, tell us what your schedule is, you know, based on past history, the amount of square footage, the different elevations and so forth. And they all projected a schedule that didn't include working weekends. So we have that buffer too, that if we do need to work weekends to make up for it. So that was encouraging to us. That's, you know, obviously, one of our biggest questions is, is this too much? Tell us, we wanna know, you know? And we asked that independently of each other in the room, uh, you know, separately so that we could get really what their take on it was. So, so to us, it's a, and I've been involved, fortunately, in my career, some really interesting and large projects, um, on roofs, but every one of them's different, they're all different circumstances, you try to learn and pick up, you know, some of the best tips from the other ones. But, um, it takes me back to, as we are vetting it out and talking to them about, tell us what, like, projects that you've had, cause you sound very confident that you can make it with the 80,000 square feet of roofing that we have. And that, again, that's what Greenwood's answered, well, we did Danbury High School. And I had already known about that, cause I'd done my homework and, and that was a very difficult job. So, you know, you get a sense that we're gonna prepare and be ready as, as best know, you get a sense that we're going to prepare and be ready as best as possible. We hope that it's good weather, but the contingency is that double shifts up to a certain point, obviously, daylight ends and weekends. So, there may be, it may be to where all the roof is done, but as we approach the first day of school, we need to have everything cleaned up. And there may be some ornamental metal that's around, the drip edges and so forth, the trim caps that you see when you're on the ground level. Maybe these are some of the things that we would consider that could be done if it's not going to affect the operation of the school, noise and so forth. So, we have a list of those items, too, that we'll be talking to the contractors about. As much as we hope for good weather, we have to plan for, have the contingency plans.
Thank you.
Great. Penny?
So, if there are problems with the solar panels once they're up in the PPA, what kind of incentive, I presume that the company putting them on, Davis Hill, is the one that has to fix them? And what incentives are there to make certain that that's done with sort of the safety and utmost, you know, performance for the school district at heart?
Mark, can you turn that up?
Does this work?
Yep.
Okay. So, good question, Penny. Two things. So, from a mechanical nuts and bolts perspective, there's an extended package of warranties out to 25 years for the electrical equipment. That being said, the Board of Ed is not acquiring any equipment. They're simply executing an agreement to buy power, to buy electricity at a fixed rate for a 20- or 25-year period. So, what if it doesn't work? There's minimum production language stipulations in that contract, and there are two things. First is, the counterparty, the seller of the power, you're the buyer, if you will, or the host, is obligated to generate 85 percent of the projected power in any given year. And that's weather-normalized. There'll be some years that are terrific and will generate more than expected, some years that are very dark and cloudy, and you won't. But, we've anticipated, we've anticipated a lot of rainy, dark and snowy days as part of weather normalization. But, so that being said, if you fall short of the 85 percent anticipated production, the counterparty makes up the difference. So, they pay the difference between the grid power you were hoping not to have to buy, and so the differential between the projected savings and the net cost. So, there is a minimum production guarantee in the power purchase agreement, regardless of what caused the fault.
Okay. So, but in terms of actually fixing the solar panels and what, we, right now, Dan, you supervise all the people that come onto our school to fix the different issues that we have with equipment. So, since we're not going to own this equipment, that's the solar panels that are on, when something happens, when something gets damaged, what type of controls do we have as a school district to make certain that the people that are brought on are of, you know, who we would want to have, and that it's all done with the sort of safety and security of the students and the building in mind?
Well, we do have a security plan that we follow, and that includes any contract that comes on site. We check their credentials and make sure, we do a safety search on them. In terms of their competency and to make sure that they're performing what they need to do properly, it's another advantage of having licensed personnel on site that work with us, so they would accompany them. Part of it's also for our training, too, so that we understand. And possibly, there might be a time where we could also assist with doing some of the inspections, just to make sure that the system's operating as promised and is delivering. So...
Dan, maybe I could help with that, too. The PPA, it's outlined right in the PPA very specifically, how the building is accessed. We went through that with our attorney today to beef up that language a bit because we want to have forward notice up to, I think we talked about 72 hours' notice if they're going to come on site. Anyone who comes from all-electric, who is going to be the O&M provider, has to have security background checks on file, going through the detailed security check that we use in HR rather than just the school gate that we have at the school level. And they're required to provide support that meets certain industry standards. So, all of that's outlined in the PPA, and we have control over their access to the building. We can't limit it because they do have to be able to provide us with the energy that they contracted for, but we do have the controls over the access rights.
And we put a line in the PPA today. It has to go through my office. They need to contact me directly. So, that'll start the process.
Okay, good.
Deanna?
So, excuse me. This is a dumb question because I'm not sure I fully understand the financing around the PPA and sort of the tax credits that are, who get, you know, I'm guessing Davis Hill gets them from, and it offsets something that they're investing in. But, I haven't seen the financials, so I don't totally understand. But, what happens if Davis Hill goes out of business, goes bankrupt? I don't, I mean, I know we didn't put any money out to put the solar panels up. So, but what happens if they, you know, I don't know the company. I don't know anything about them. So, 25 years is a long time. What happens?
Well, so, to try to anticipate, every situation's different. So, there are a lot of dependencies there. But, so this equipment is net-metered. You will have a, so that would be a default in the contract. So, there are provisions for either party, and there is also an opportunity, there will be a purchase schedule. So, after depreciation period, New Canaan can acquire the equipment and have the Z-Rex, the renewable energy credits reassigned to New Canaan. That's one condition. But, that would certainly sound like a default. Now, the power, since it's net-metered, if there is no Davis Hill there, there is no entity there to bill you for the power, but you keep enjoying. So, you would be getting free power. That would be one scenario. There would be net-metered, so there would be no entity to be billing you for the power. At some point, they would probably go through bankruptcy, and that would be trued up. And the math is pretty easy. It would be a fixed rate times the kilowatt-hours generated, and those hours are metered. So, right now, you have one meter on the property. You're, it's a one-way meter. That's replaced with a two-way meter, so energy can go back and forth, and Eversource gives you a credit. The second meter will be a RECC meter, renewable energy credit meter, and that's a third-party meter that allows you to calculate how much energy was generated from those solar powers in return for a payment that's made to the system owner. That's the renewable energy credit, okay? And so, Eversource and a public utility authority are looking at that meter to determine how much of a credit payment, cash payment, to send to the system owner. And then, the third meter is really the meter that's used to charge you for the electricity. It's a revenue-grade meter that we have visibility into and is true, it is adjusted annually, and the seller has visibility into it. And that's what they use to calculate what your payment is. So, they're verifying how much energy was generated by those panels, what to charge you. So, if they were to go bankrupt, somebody's going to pick up that revenue-producing asset. And in the interim, the power theoretically would, there would be no one there to charge you for the power, but it doesn't go away. The system doesn't disconnect, if you will.
And again, Deanna, this is all spelled out in the PPA, and there is actually a clause in there for bankruptcy and what happens in that event.
Okay. Once they've, I mean, the way I think about it is, once they've spent the money to put the solar panels on the roof, there's almost no reason for them to not keep sending the bill, right, unless they physically can't do it. I mean, they've already made the upfront investment, and it's really about, you know, collecting at that point. So, from our perspective, you know, it's what happens if that equipment breaks down and there's no one there to fix it at, you know, 10, 15 years in the future. But, at that point, again, it's about the contract, and if they're not living up to the contract, then we don't have to pay them.
So, it is the maintenance. So, there's maintenance language if, you know, it'd be good for, maybe the board could get a copy of that.
Yeah, in advance.
That'd be great.
For sure.
So, there, just to think of it, there are two cash flows that the investor's looking at. So, let's say roughly, it's $2 a watt. They're making a $600,000 investment in the equipment. Okay. First is, they get a 30 percent investment tax credit year one, and then they can write off the balance over a five-year period, okay? So, then they're enjoying two cash flows. One is the renewable energy credits, which we've secured, we assigned to them. Those are worth about 9.5 cents a kilowatt-hour, okay? So, they're getting that payment over a 15-year period from Eversource. There's an Eversource contract in place. And by virtue of us securing the Z-Rex and posting the surety payment, which you did a few months ago, or September of last year, those monies have been escrowed. So, that's the nine and a half cents. And then, they're going to collect about four cents from New Canaan Board of Ed or Town of New Canaan for the next 20 years. So, actually, they're getting much more payments from Eversource, three times, than they are from New Canaan. And so, they're collecting about, if I could do the math, they're collecting about 15 cents all in, almost 10 cents from Eversource and about four and a half cents from you.
All right. Thank you. Penny, sorry.
Just have one more question. So, we're basically covering 75 percent of our energy consumption. So, are we paying zero for that, or are we paying four cents for that?
Four cents.
Four cents, okay.
So, yep, you're paying four cents. And then, the balance at prevailing rates.
So, the four cents is basically, what's that?
So, the balance, so you're not 100 percent off the grid. There are things that we can do. We're looking to benchmark the building and see what we could trim as a next step. But, so you won't be 100 percent off the grid. But, the energy that this system generates, you don't pay any transmission charges. That's the Eversource fee to move electrons around the grid. You just pay the, let's say, four cents fixed for 20 years or 25 years.
And then, we pay our normal rates for the remaining 25 percent?
And for any, yes. Any additional energy you need, you're going to buy that from the grid, unless you can trim that load, or you can do this again. You can add to this system because, like you said, or like you observed, you're only covering about 75 percent of the roof. So, in theory, you could go back in a year and apply for a small Z-Rex contract to fill in the balance, once you've figured out what your normalized energy usage is. And then, you could theoretically be 100 percent off grid.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other thing that I think everybody should understand is that we're almost 100 percent, obviously, there's a time element to it, but almost 100 percent offsetting the cost of the roof with the savings from power, right? It's $2 million roughly over 25 years. This is a 25- to 30-year roof. So, we're paying for it. We're paying for it over, you know, that period of time, whereas the cost is upfront, but it's still essentially fully offsets our roof cost, which is pretty impressive. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is an action item, a donation from the West PTC.
Yes. So, about a month and a half ago or so, I had a very exciting meeting with representatives from the West PTC. They had been meeting with Principal Murphy for a little while, talking about the courtyard over at West and their vision to transform that outdoor courtyard into an outdoor learning opportunity for our students. It's something that, as a district, we've been looking at and working on across the buildings. We have our organic garden that was mentioned earlier today. At South School, over at Saks, they're looking at different opportunities to do things in the outdoors. So, it seems, it's quite consistent with sort of our initiatives and belief in expanding the opportunity for students to learn out of the classroom into some of these outdoor spaces. What West is looking to do is a three-year phased approach. So, this would just, this would be phase one. And in phase one, they would look to complete an outdoor classroom space with a seating wall and a shade so that folks could use that during the school day. It's really, each of the phases is designed to be standalone as they go through, but the vision overall of the space is to create outdoor learning centers for students and classes to use, individual spaces out there for students to be able to go out and read and talk and meet and relax, and even possibly putting an outdoor performance center or station there where a class or two could go out with a stage and be outside and be able to experience. So, the overall vision, I think, is expansive and impressive. I think that right now, they're asking simply for the phase one of the project so that they could get the ball rolling with it. They would do that, an outdoor learning space and the seating wall, so they could start to use it in the fall, and really start to use that confined space. Right now, it's the courtyard that currently has the greenhouse in it, and they are incorporating the greenhouse into the project design, you know, as they work through the phases as well. So, it's using that, which was, again, a generous gift in the past, and turning that space in. So, the request on the, before the board tonight is to accept a $64,000 donation, which would enable them to go ahead and get this set up and done and start using it in the fall. And I think that it...
It's amazing.
It's an amazingly thoughtful gift and approach. And again, I think it'll be wonderful for our students. And as an administrative team in a district, we've been thinking about, you know, how else can we continue to incorporate outdoors into our students' experiences in our days in sort of, you know, thoughtful, purposeful ways? You know, there's certainly research that talks about the benefits of being outdoors. And so, I think that some of our schools have done some things, again, the organic garden, and this is a wonderful initiative that West has brought forward. So, it's before you tonight, and if the board is...
Very generous.
Approves this, they'll probably make a call tomorrow morning and get the schedule set and be able to get going right when the school year ends. And, you know, the courtyard does pose challenges because it is a courtyard, right? It's not easy to get in and out of. But, they've got all of that worked out, and they've really done a wonderful job, both conceptualizing and planning this wonderful project. And Karen Willett, co-president of the PTC, is here. And Principal Murphy from West School is here as well.
Any questions?
Questions? Trina?
I don't have a question, but I do have to comment. I saw the photos, and I just was reading through it, and it's really exciting. And to imagine the possibilities of what could take place there and seeing the photographs, it's beautiful. It's just going to be spectacular for our students, and I imagine the teachers and staff are really excited about the endless possibilities. So, thank you to the parents, the PTC, and to you, Jan, for making this happen. It's exciting. And the partnership with all the schools for outdoor learning is exciting. So, great.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the donation. Penny, second? Anyone? Jen? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Next is comments from the public. Karen?
Has the public tonight?
Okay. Seeing that, announcements and future business. Dr. Lutz?
Sure. As you'll recall, our next meeting will be June 24th. We'll be asking for approval for contract signature authorization, as we do annually for Dr. Keating and myself. We'll also be sharing the results of the school start time survey that had gone out and be able to speak, answer other questions around that with the board. I'll have the meeting dates for 2020, which we'll have to approve, so people can plan their days and nights. And a few other updates, saving of accounts, model UN. We will have our PPA agreement, as we were just discussing, and a first draft of the district goals and objectives. So, it'll be another busy night, and looking forward to it. Move it.
Great. Thanks. So, I'd like a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-200B. Purposes of discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, provided that such individual may require that discussion be held in an open meeting. Superintendent and cabinet members may join the board for purposes of its annual evaluation of the superintendent. I have a motion. Penny, second? Sherry? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.